Since I saw you last, a few hours ago.
I don't believe you.
Staff, thank you for being here. People who are joining us in person, thank you for being here. Nice to have you. And those of you joining us electronically throughout the week, it's nice to have you with us. This is a regular meeting of the City of Waverly City Council. This is January 22nd, 2024, 7:00, and this meeting is now called to order. Would you please call us a roll order?
Yes, Bergen.
Here I am.
Drinkow.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Kengis.
President.
Myers is absent. Rothie.
Here.
And Wolf.
Here.
And welcome again to Mr. Atkins for joining us as the guest council members. It's nice to have you with us.
Thank you.
Would you all join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Counsel, the agenda is in front of you, as posted to the public. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda? I will move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? I hear none. This is a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That was unanimous. Thank you. Approval of the minutes, I would entertain a motion.
I'd move approval of the minutes.
Thank you. Second. Any discussion? I hear none. So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That was 6-0, unanimous. Thank you. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on items which are not currently on the agenda? I see no one rising. So, we'll move on to item G, the consent calendar. I would entertain a motion to approve the entire calendar at once. Consent?
I will move approval of the consent calendar as provided.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Anything, want to pull anything out? I see nothing. So, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Unopposed? That was 6-0, unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to regular business. We have before us Resolution 24-06, a resolution approving a preliminary and final plat for the Southgate subdivision, creating Southgate 2, a re-subdivision of lots 2 and 4 of Southgate Plat 1, on behalf of Waftown Properties, a limited liability corporation. Is there a motion?
I will move approval of Resolution 24-06, a resolution approving a preliminary and final plat for the Southgate subdivision, creating Southgate 2, a re-subdivision of lots 2 and 3 of Southgate Plat 1, on behalf of Waftown Properties LLC.
Thank you.
2 and 4.
2 and 4? I'm sorry.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Could somebody take us through that map?
Absolutely.
Please.
If you would, Bill.
Sure. So, the map, you see the lot 1 in the bottom left corner is the Taco Bell. And so, 4th Street is on the left side, and 29th Avenue is on the bottom. The lots were before Lot 1, and then above it was Lot 2, and then above that was Lot 3, and then the backside was all along Lot 4. So, they're splitting Lot 4 basically, almost in half, so that they have a middle, the middle 2 lots. This plat will have a different-looking ingress and egress easement across it because it's not a straight street. It's going to turn into going through the parking lot, the business that will be placed there.
There will still be access along the north. So, the little bit on the top of the new Lot 1 and the little bit of the bottom of the old Lot 3 will be a road coming in off of 4th Street. There'll be a right-turn-only access, so you can turn right into it and turn right out of it.
Right on. Okay. Thanks.
Judge, you bear my email, there's quite a bit of interest in this one little item. Okay, so, we have a motion and a second. It's on the floor. Any more discussion?
I would point out, it was a 6-0 vote by planning and zoning.
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you. Any more discussion? You appear ready to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
We'll call them, please.
Vote. Thank you. Carla.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Kengis.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
That was 6-0, which makes it unanimous. Thank you very much. Item number 2. This is the first reading of Ordinance 1139, and ordinance amending ordinances numbers 569, 585, 609, 638, 664, 733, 791, 853, 866, 892, 931, 736, 932, 978, 1025, 1053, 1060, 1066, 1080, and 1137, and providing that general property shall no longer be divided on certain property located within the Waverly Unified Urban Renewal Area in the City of Waverly, County of Breamer, State of Iowa, that is removing non-taxable property from division of revenue. Can I have a motion?
I will move approval of the first reading of Ordinance 1139, as read by the mayor.
Second. Thank you. Yes, Bill, please.
This is one to clean up that, like the one we did before on 1137, because there was one district that was not on the auditor's list because it has a negative balance. So, we had to fix that one up so that we can get it back to a positive TIF balance on that one. So, this just, and generally speaking, it's removing non-taxable property. There is removal of the historic lost building because of the fact that it is valued at using a method that looks at its rents, what it pays, or what is paid to it in rents, so that the actual valuation wouldn't be what you would consider for the amount of money that had to be spent to fix that building up. So, we're not going to be paying them any TIF rebates because the tax revenues are not high enough to ever get there in the next five years. We've gone five years, and we're 400,000 apart, or short of being able to have to pay them anything. So, we're just going to do that, and then that way it takes out the basis, which then the rest of the properties in the, in that district will not be wiped out by the big basis that can't be used. So, it'll just be one more cleanup item. I don't, there's no other ones that are hiding anymore, because I got two more that are fine. And the rest of them are all fixed now, so we should be in good shape.
Excellent. Thank you, Bill. Any other discussion or questions of any kind?
So, all of these ordinances, ordinances numbers, 569, et cetera, is all in reference to the Waverly Historic Losses?
No. So, I'll tell you that technically speaking, the ordinances from 569 to 1080, 1080 is the last one. 1137 and then the new 1139 are just correcting, corrections, so that the main ordinance is 1080.
Those are all part of the urban renewal area that we've done, back and forth, and up and down from the start of it. So, we're cleaning it all up, all the way through.
So, everything's getting cleaned up? Okay.
Right. Ollers puts that all in the title, so it shows the historic ordinances, because they all have, because when you look through the ordinance, you actually have information from those, each one of those areas, each one of the original ordinances. They just get added on when they need.
You have to describe each time we put one in.
So, that whole long stretch is basically part of the title of just this one?
Yes.
So, it's not a bunch of different ordinances? It's basically just one ordinance with a really complicated-looking title?
Right.
Any other discussion? All right. Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Kengis.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes. That's unanimous at 6-0. Resolution number 3, 2407, is a resolution recommending that Breamer County approves the plat of survey to create parcel I and parcel J within the 2-mile radius of Waverly, Iowa. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll move approval of Resolution 24-07, a resolution recommending that Breamer County approves the plat of survey to create parcel I and parcel J within the 2-mile radius of Waverly, Iowa.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions?
Is there any point in time where we need to be concerned about all of these residences going up outside the city limits?
Sure.
I mean, we pretty much routinely approve these, but I've been concerned the last year or two that maybe we need to be taking a little bit closer look at this and have our own policy on what we approve. It appears that the County Board of Supervisors is pretty much approving them routinely. And, you know, these are all places that, you know, I don't know, I haven't thought this through, but I don't know if we would ever get to a situation where this would cause us some issues, either if at some point we wanted to bring some of this property into the city, or if this was going to become some kind of a weight on city services. I mean, obviously, people are moving out here and doing this so they don't have to pay city property taxes. But how do these, have we thought about how these residences actually affect the city? And is there a negative impact on the city of these things?
So, I should point out that this particular property is an existing property where they're separating off the former homestead from the agricultural part of it. So, I mean, you basically have the area where the house is that is being set off as a single plot. There's another area where there's an outbuilding. You have an access to the agricultural on the one side of the property so that they can separate off that agriculture.
Right.
So, I don't, I mean, I understand your concern, but I don't know that that's relevant in this case.
It may not be. It's just that, you know, we had these come up three, four times a year, and I'm just, you know, we pretty much routinely just approve them, and I'm wondering if at some point we need to really look more closely at how this actually impacts the city, and if there's some negative impacts, and whether we should be routinely approving them, or if we need to look at it a little bit more closely. That, I'm not in particular concerned about this particular proposal. That's just kind of where I'm coming from, and I don't know if that's, if anybody else has those concerns, and if we can do something about that.
I remember we talked about it a little bit when we looked at replodding near Walmart to the, I think it was to the west, maybe a little south of Walmart, and we talked about, you know, what, do we want to have more organization with subdivisions and rather than, because if we are going to grow, which direction do we think we're going to grow, and do we want it, you know, how are you going to then put infrastructure in, if necessary, and, you know, so?
I mean, I'll let Bill elaborate, but it is a problem. I mean, you see in our strategic planning or comprehensive land use map, we have corridors we're expecting to be commercial vestri that have acreages plucked in them all the time. The county approves it, and there's nothing we can do about it. It's not our property to approve. It is ministerial in a sense. You can vote against it, but they can still approve it. That's the hard part about the 2-mile agreement, so I'll feel elaborate a little.
Have we ever had a meeting with the county to talk about it?
We don't have a 2-mile agreement. We haven't had one for quite, quite some time with the new zoning administrator from the county, who is our building inspector also. There's been discussions already with Paige and her, and we're going to continue to have those discussions, because what we need is a 2-mile agreement where we don't have to review places where we're never going to really grow into. C-33 is not something that we're going to have to worry about doing services to anytime soon. And there's other places where we would like to have control, and we don't want to have just recommendation. We want to have control over certain areas. So, you kind of negotiate that area where it's likely to be a part of the city at some point, and we don't want them building the houses right off that, on the outside of that, our property lines are basically our city lines. Because if we can serve them eventually, we'd rather have them be another subdivision that grows. So, we are working on that. We had a number of years where we had some difficult negotiations, and we just kind of gave up on it at that point, but we're getting back to that, and I think we can come up with some good ideas.
That's good. When you look at that intersection out north of the airport, there's the entry onto the interstate, that could have been a nice spot for commercial development.
That's what it's made for.
Yeah.
But there's big acreages out there, and that's what happens. And you'll see it at times, and you do expand city limits, and it's not just here, it's in other places. You'll have an acreage or 2 in town, that's how it happened. You expanded past it, it's already existing, there's not much you can do about that. Now, it's kind of in the way, so to speak, but that's what we deal with and try to prevent.
I mean, and my concern is then you get the people who are living on those roads complaining that, you know, traffic is too fast along that route, because they put a residential area in an area that we wanted to be commercial. So, you know, they can come in and complain that the speed limit is too high when they put their house somewhere that we had slated for future growth.
So, it's good you're having more conversations with the county, because that needs to happen.
And we've been working on that for, Paige has had those kind of sessions already.
Because it does kind of put the light of planning. If we do a very good job of planning, I think, for the city inside the city limits, but once you cross that line, it seems like the planning goes out the window, so.
And you have to have a cooperation between the city and the county, because, you know, we have interest, they have interest, you know, they like the taxable value that they get from, what they get from us. We do too, but we also have to be able to serve the areas that we want to control. So, if we have an area we say, "We'd love to control this," but we can't put sewer and water to them, why are we doing that? I mean, so we don't want to do it that way. But we do want to make sure there's growth areas where we can control.
I'm glad that we're aware of the issue and that there have been discussions with the county, so.
Ron, item 3, we have a motion and a second. Is there more discussion? You appear ready to vote, Carla.
Jones.
Yes.
Kengis.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
That was unanimous at 6-0. Item 4, a second reading of Ordinance 1138, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of Waverly, Iowa by repealing Chapter 33, that is Economic Development Commission. Can I have a motion? I would move approval of the second reading of Ordinance 1138, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of Waverly, Iowa by repealing Chapter 33, the Economic Development Commission.
Second.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Any more discussion? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Kengis.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Jones.
That was unanimous at 6-0. Resolution 2408, a resolution setting a bid letting date and setting a public hearing for the remodel of existing Parks Maintenance Building Phase 2 project. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll move approval of Resolution 24-08, a resolution setting a bid letting date for Tuesday, February 6, 2024, and setting a public hearing for February 19, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the City Council chambers at City Hall for the review of the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost of the remodel of existing Parks Maintenance Building Phase 2 project.
Second.
Thank you. So, that's on the table. Any discussion? Any questions?
Thanks for the pictures.
Yeah. Hopefully, it helps see why we're doing it, so.
All right. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Rothie.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Kengis.
Yes.
Unanimous at 6-0. Resolution 2409, a resolution approving pay request number 7 and 8, and accepting the Parks Maintenance Building Office Remodel Phase 1 as complete. Can I have a motion?
I'll move approval of Resolution 24-09, a resolution pay request number 7 in the amount of $9,492.87, and pay request number 8 in the amount of $32,624.50 as the final pay request to Staggy Construction Incorporated of Waverly, Iowa.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. We'll give that, I think Kengis was a fraction ahead of you, sorry. There it is. Any discussion?
Just nice to make this building more usable.
Yeah. Are you ready to vote? Roll call, please.
Wolf.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Kengis.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
That was unanimous at 6-0. Item 7 is Resolution 24-10, a resolution approving an amendment to the City of Waverly City Council Rules and Procedures. These are in front of you. Is there a motion, please?
I'll move approve, we approve Resolution 24-10, a resolution approving an amendment to the City of Waverly City Council Rules and Procedure.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I just have one item on here, and it might be a little bit picky, but under 1.09, where it talks about the clerk of the council, I don't have a problem with the new language, but I think it should indicate who actually designates the person to act as a clerk of the council. I believe it was probably intended that that be the city administrator, because the city administrator appoints someone in an emergency situation too, and that's an administrative function and not a political function. So, I move that the language in Section 1.09 be changed to a person designated by the city administrator, rather than the deputy city clerk, a designated person.
Thank you. We'll take that as a friendly amendment, please. Will the person who made the motion and the second accept it?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
I have another area I'd like to add something to. So, in Section 1.15, guest council members, under Part D, Section 1, we say preference should be given to individuals who are serving on city boards or commissions, or have expressed an interest in learning more about the functions of city government. I would like to add to that a statement, preference should be given to individuals who have not previously served as guest council.
Can we take that as a friendly amendment? Will the person who made the motion and the second accept?
Yes.
All right. Any more discussion or amendments?
I would like to strike the item C under 1.10.
Can you tell us what that is?
That is the item stopping any mayor appointments between the election and January 1st, so those 2 months.
Okay.
I didn't think that would go through without any comment.
I just, I think there's city business that does need to get done, and I don't think tying, tying a sitting mayor's hands is necessary in that case. Because that would just be a, to me, it's just like saying, well, no council member that's leaving or got voted out after November should be able to vote on anything until the next council. No. They're elected through the end of the year. That's the term. So, they should be able to do all rules of that office up until the end of their term.
I think it also is a separate ordinance right now, and so you'd have to probably amend the ordinance to actually enforce the rule.
Yeah. Well, my concern is that there's no accountability for a mayor who is either not running again or who is, has been defeated to, no accountability to the voters if they're making appointments after they've, they're basically been, are leaving office. That was the issue that I had. You've got kind of a lame duck session where you're nominating people for very important positions on boards and commissions, but there's no accountability either to, or no accountability to the voters on that. So, that's my concern. I understand everybody else's feelings on it. That's why we have 7 people here, and we all have different opinions on that, and I'm not going to play the facts, so.
Yeah, I think, you know, what if you announce 6 months before your term's up that you're not going to run again? Do you not get to appoint anybody for the next 6 months, or, you know, I think the way we have accountability is the council votes on the appointments. And I think as we showed with this last round of appointments at the end of the year, people raised issues, and we had good discussion, and now we have a more transparent process. So, people, we on the council and as part of the published agenda can see the applications of people, but I agree with Tim. I don't think we should limit the mayor's duties in this way.
Okay. I'm going to say that this is not simple wordsmithing, but this is a change. So, I'm going to call this an amendment to the resolution. So, I'm going to take this as a motion to amend.
Motion to amend.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Second, Dr. Rothie, thank you. Is there further discussion? I think that to amend something that needs a roll call vote, we need to roll call vote it. So, would you roll call vote, and let's be clear for the people watching online, we're voting to amend this document with Mr. Kengis's amendment.
To strike.
To strike.
Yes would be to strike.
Vote yes is to strike. Thank you for the clarification. Are you ready to vote? Ms. Guyer.
Wolf.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Kengis.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Drinkow.
No.
Bergen.
Yes.
That passed. That was 5 to 1. Thank you very much. We now go back to the document as amended and amended and amended, 2 friendly amendments and a strike. Do you have any discussion left on the original document?
I just, I like the fact.
We decided not to do the roll call, right? So, one of the changes is to remove the roll call. Okay. Because we have another way to document who's here.
I just commented, I like the fact that we have this, and we are, we review this every 2 years when we have a new council and mayor term starting, so.
And I want to thank Councilperson Dranko for giving us the document to work off of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you ready to vote? You appear ready to vote.
Ms. Guyer.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Kengis.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
That passed unanimously at 6-0. Resolution 2411, a resolution adopting further updates for the City Waverly Employee Handbook. May I have a motion?
I move to approve Resolution 2411, adopting further updates for the City of Waverly Employee Handbook.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion?
Almost done. I think we're close, 1 more, so we're almost done.
Almost there.
They went straightforward. Yeah, appreciate your work on this, Danielle.
I move to approve Resolution 2411, adopting further updates for the city of Waverly employee handbook.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion?
Almost done. I think we're close, one more, so we're almost done.
Almost there.
They look straightforward. Yeah, appreciate your work on this, Daniel.
All right. Carla, would you give us a roll call vote, please?
Drinkow.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Kengas.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Unanimously at six-zero. The reports from the boards and commissions are in front of you, we don't need to act on that, I don't believe, and that would take us to, James?
We have nothing tonight, sir.
Well, okay. City council comments, I forgot what direction we went last time, so let's just start with Brian. Councilmember Bergen.
So let's see, as the weather has warmed up to become just a wonderful 32 degrees after, you know, that 10 below, and some of us who like to walk are out there and walking our dogs and enjoying the beautiful weather, I would encourage people to please clean off your sidewalks. There's a lot of us who are enjoying the opportunity to get out, and I don't want to slip and fall, so on behalf of me and my dog, please clean off your sidewalk. And again, anyone who would like to join me to discuss city politics, I will be at the Breamer Avenue Brewery after the meeting.
Thank you. Councilman Jones.
Just happy to be here.
Excellent. Councilperson Drakeo.
Oh, I had something, but I can't find it now, so I'll leave it for the next.
Councilperson Rothie, I wonder if you're going to object to this whole clean off the sidewalks, we don't fall down in Congress.
Okay, so full disclosure, I was attempting to clean off my own sidewalk and slipped and fell and broke my wrist, so I want to thank the people at the Waverly Emergency Room, and Dr. Bartelt, who is one of our visiting specialists, who patched me up, and I'm out of my cast, and I did not drive with my cast on, Chief Purcell, I waited, so I have just a splint. So thank you for everybody who's taken me places and taken me food and et cetera. So yes, please clean off your sidewalks, or hire it out.
Councilperson Wolf.
I will add on top of sidewalks, curb cuts, and the handicap are the accessible parking spots and the hatch marks, which just make my life a lot easier.
Thank you. Mayor Proten.
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Guest councilperson, do you have any comments? You sat through another meeting.
No.
How are we doing?
You're doing great. I appreciate the invite again, and I don't, I think I have anything additional.
Thank you. I have three.